Today, we are meeting, this is the Orlando Sentinel Editorial Board Meeting, with the candidates for Orange County School Board Chair. This is an at-large election, it is nonpartisan, and it will be on the August 23 ballot. Everybody is allowed to vote, our registered voters are allowed to vote, it is not a partisan race. So, I'd like to get started, and I'm always want to start with our incumbent. This past year, we had seen a tremendous amount of political attention coming from Tallahassee that is going to affect the way that classrooms operate across Orange County and Apaca and Orlando. And I'm wondering if you can tell me what challenges the current political environment presents for local school board officials? And how you think Orange County should be coping with that? And obviously, there is one immediate thing that we've all heard about, which is some changes that were, have been taking place over the last couple of years, I mean, couple of day, weeks, in terms of what teachers are allowed to display. But, but just in general, if you could address that.
Thank you, thank you so much. You know, one of the things you all probably know, I have always, I've always run in nonpartisan races, and that's not a coincidence. I find that we can get a lot done when we focus on what the issue is, whether the issue is roads and providing public services as a county commissioner or mayor, to how do we best provide for our students' education and their welfare? And sometimes politics can, sometimes politics can get in the way of focusing really on the students and their best interests. So, I would say this year has been, certainly, it's been challenging for us from the standpoint, more than anything, a lack of clarity out of what has come from some of the bills that have passed. And it is, I may agree or disagree with different laws, but we're going to follow the laws as best we can, but we have to understand what they actually mean. And we do have a few that really, I fear, are going to land us in lawsuits, not just Orange County, but across the state, as we try to work to decipher what some of the expectations were out of the legislature. I also fear that from one court in Leon County may come down very differently on a same question, that maybe a court in Miami-Dade might come down differently, and the laws need to be, they need to mean the same thing throughout the state. So, what I think I hope the most for, and I'm really kind of begging for, is that the Florida Department of Education will help clarify what their expectations are out of us, so that we can do our best to get back to the business of taking care of our students and educating them.
Thank you for the question. For me, you're right, there has been a lot that has been passed of recent, even just coming into effect on July the first, which was, I believe we were referring to the bill that by then Senator Diaz was the main proponent of that bill, who is now Commissioner of our Department of Education. What I believe is this, there were problems within our system that forced our senators and our representatives in the House and our governor to have to respond to desires from the parents. And what happened is that there's, there was a perceived disconnect between what parents were expecting to have done in the school systems throughout the state of Florida, and what was actually happening. And because of this disconnect, and what was thought to be needed by the, by the parents and by the students, a wrong process was being put in place. I actually believe that concerning those bills, I am a person who believes in the rule of law. I do believe that we should follow and obey the law, else we have anarchy. I do not believe in school boards trying to find ways to circumvent or use our taxpayer money to find ways to, what's the right word, send this fight against laws that, as we just heard, still, though they were written, they need to be, yes, they need to be vetted out as far as explained, which I do agree with, because there are nuances that we do not necessarily know, and I've been on a lot of board meetings and heard what was, what was said, some of the worries and that, and everything. And I do believe that that should be vetted out, and we should have those things explained, so that everybody is in as risk-free status as possible. But I will say this again, because I'm a person who is an adherent to law, I do believe that the wrong image has been presented in a lot of our state districts concerning submittal to law, and I do believe that that has put a wrong bent when it comes down to our students and how we follow order. I believe it's put the wrong, because I believe it's painted the wrong picture to them. So, what do I believe? We should find out, go through the process of finding out what all of these new rules mean, and then using the wisdom that we have in our role as a school board, implement them correctly in our district.
If I could ask a follow-up on that, Mr. Barton.
Yes.
We've had several of these interviews, and I've heard a lot of concerns about perception. I'm not as interested in perception as I am reality. I know you have said you are concerned about critical race theory, that's one of the things you mentioned on your website. Can you give us a specific example of where you believe critical race theory has been taught in Orange County, for instance?
Okay. Orange County. When we're looking at critical race theory, what is it really? Do I believe that our teachers should, even though they may believe in the principles of things like Black Lives Matter, or they may believe in a number of these other principles, do I believe that they have a right to take up their classroom time and then spend that focused on those matters, as opposed to what parents believe that their children should be learning? I'll say that is a no. I believe that what has happened, as you yourself know, we've had a very tumultuous last two years. Ever since COVID, ever since the election of 2020, we've had a very tumultuous time, and actually before that, but definitely within the last two years. What I'm looking at right now is simply this, critical race theory, the real issue isn't whether or not I can name everything that has happened in the past, the real issue is whether or not parents want to talk to their kids. If someone tells me that they are not teaching it, so why do we need the rule? But the parents are saying, I want a safeguard in case someone chooses to, so that I have a means of dissuading them from implementing something that my, I do not want from my child, I will agree with that parent, because the parent had wisdom.
Okay, and I appreciate that, but just, just so I was clear, my specific question was, do you have any instances of that being taught in Orange County so far? I do not hear you saying yes to that question, I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
The, what the answer that I'm giving you is the only answer I can give you, and it is this, the most important portion of this for me is whether or not the parents believe that they are covered. There are instances that parents have mentioned, and you can go online and see them yourself. As a representative here who's a candidate, I am not going to get into the nuances, because that's getting into a whole lot of minutia. But what I can say is that I do agree that the parents who believe that there is a possibility or a reality that their child was taught incorrectly, and that the government of Florida has decided that it doesn't-
I understand you, I think I heard you the first time. No specifics, in the past, you're worried about theoreticals or perceptions. Let's switch topics to a different one. There has been a movement-
Chairwoman, the chair, will you respond to that as well?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, yeah, I would love to respond to that. No, I am not aware of any instances of critical race theory being taught in schools. If I, it is brought up to our attention, we would nip it in the bud. It wasn't allowed before this last law was passed, it has never been allowed. And I think it's extremely unfortunate that so much energy and anger has been spent on a non-issue. And so, I thank you for raising that. I would like to talk about another perception issue if we get a chance to, and that's social emotional learning, because that's another area where there's a great deal of confusion coming out of Tallahassee, and this issue is something that is important to our students that is being taught in our schools.
Actually-
May I ask a question?
Actually, I think that's a topic for you-
Ask the question, please, because I just heard something I did not understand concerning the interview. So, I can, if I believe that there's a topic that we do need to enter into, I may be able to offer that one up also, because I was not doing that, because I was, the way I understood is I needed to be silent until I was asked the question.
I believe, you can enter, say anything you want. I think what Ms. Flucker was asking was that candidates not address each other or interrupt each other, if I'm speaking for you correctly.
Oh, I did not interrupt anybody, I was just, I was just asking a question.
And, and just to go ahead and get clear, this, I want to hear, this is about learning about y'all. With that said, we have, we do have a short time, so we can get to more stuff if we keep our answers very concise, and, 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 and if you have something you'd like us to address, I think that, I mean, the chair has already identified one thing she'd like to talk about, and I'd certainly welcome hearing that, hearing the same from you as well.
I appreciate it, thank you for your-
Okay, thanks. All right.
Thank you. So, when, one of the first things that we did when I became chair, we redid our strategic plan, and one of the things that we added to it was social emotional learning for our students, social emotional welfare. We believed this was very important. And what happened last year was the Commissioner of Education, actually, the Chancellor of Education for K-12 issued a memo to the publishers of math books, saying, "Don't give us any critical race theory in your math books, don't give us anything unsolicited, and don't give us any SEL." Now, he also included in there, "And school districts don't do this either." So, frankly, to be honest with you, I was not a receiver of that memo, because it went to the math publishers, but meanwhile, and he referred to SEL, meanwhile, a bill was passed, and the bill is House Bill 7, and the bill requires that we teach life skills. And the life skills we're required to teach by law are self-awareness, by the way, social emotional learning, the first tenet of social emotional learning is self-awareness. Under life skills, self-management. Social emotional learning, self-management. Under life skills, responsible decision-making. Also, under social emotional learning, under life skills, relationship skills, social awareness. There are five tenants of, that we are required now to teach, which are exactly what we've been teaching, which is in our strategic plan, but we have a memo that says SEL, which teaches the same thing, but is called something else. Social emotional learning, life skills, they do exactly the same thing. We have one member of the cabinet of the governor's team telling us, "Don't do this." We have a bill that tells us, "Thou shalt," the bill trumps, a memo that was issued last year, and my opponent is campaigning against social emotional learning, and got quite angry at me at a recent meeting, because he thinks we're violating the law. This is where Tallahassee is not helpful to us, when they are telling us two separate things that contradict each other.
And, and-
May I respond?
Yes, I would like, I'd like you to do that.
Okay. Instead of responding directly, I'm going to actually give a discourse on this. What happened for me, and it was simple, when I found out about social emotional learning, I decided to dig into it. I've done everything from asking teachers, to reading the laws, to reading the standards, and all of this wonderful dogma that we just have to go through to get a better understanding. Now, after going through these things, I will agree with Ms. Teresa on one thing. When it came down to SEL, there was areas of, that lacked clarity. What was very plain was the memo that she referenced, that actually explained the DOE's stance on critical race theory and SEL, that they were both unsolicited strategies, that was the way it flowed, actually. It flowed, they set it together, and then it was unsolicited strategies. When they did it, and they did direct that to the book manufacturers, and also directed it to the districts, that, that district statement right there was where the clarity I had to gain from going up to Tallahassee came from. And what that clarity was, was this, that that was in reference to our instructional materials. Now, this is where we start to get into the parts of this that's more important. The instructional materials, if they had SEL, or social emotional learning content, or CRT, which is critical race theory, if it had those content, whether it was a math book, history book, English book, you name it, that unsolicited material must either be extracted and replaced, or just re-extracted, but it could not stay, else the, if it stayed, the book could not be used. What happened at that meeting where we were talking was not concerning books. What happened at that meeting when I was speaking was, I made a point at that board meeting, that if our state government and our Department of Education are telling us in their rulings, that we are not supposed to have CRT and/or SEL strategies used in our system, in our, in our learning materials, that should inherently align with, you cannot be pushing a social emotional learning-based strategy in teaching our kids just because it's not in a book. That sounds like a workaround to me. That sounds like somebody has avoided the spirit of the laws that we had. But I will give this one thing, by the time I finally went to the end of that rabbit trail, CRT was the one that we had brought closure to, which is the one that was mentioned earlier, that in July, on July the first got enacted, that rule covers CRT and some of the tenants. What we have going on now, but that right there is dealing with hiring and dealing with the non-just-book stuff, and that is dealing with that material. What we have right now, though, is simple, the SEL portion, that unsolicited strategy, the question right now is how much of the basic foundations of that are not allowed in our school system?
Well, and, and I, as you understand, and I am sorry to cut you off, but we-
Go ahead, I was talking-
We have to keep these answers concise, because we are, we're almost running out of time. And I, I wanted to see if my other board members had any, any questions they wanted to ask. I have so many, but, but, um, but-
I could, I could do a, actually, I'd like to do a yes/no, because we are, I think we used over half the time on, on that one. There is, somebody do a quick one, there has been some discussion about whether school board races should be partisan, they've traditionally been nonpartisan in the state of Florida. Do you believe they should be partisan or remain unpartisan? And we can start with you, Mr. Barton.
I believe nonpartisan is, is a good way that is right now.
Okay, great, and Chair Jacobs?
Nonpartisan.
Okay, great, thank you, got something done quickly there. Jay or Jennifer?
I wanted to ask really quick about school safety, because obviously, that's been top of mind for, for many, many different tragic and, and all sorts of reasons. I'd like to start with Chair Jacobs on this. What has been a, a mistake that has been made by yourself or the board when it comes to school safety? And as, as you look forward, coming out, coming out the other side of this, what lessons have you learned?
I wish I could tell you that, that I could, that I know of a mistake, I don't know of one right now. A mistake I'm concerned about is whether or not all of our faculty and staff are going to follow all of our protocols religiously, and that's one of the reasons we're having a closed-door session, to make sure that everybody understands that every single time you walk in that classroom door, you lock that door, end of subject. No unlocked doors, no propped-open doors. One of the things, the first things that I raised when I got to Orange County Public Schools was emergency communication radio strength. Would a law enforcement officer on one side of the school be able to talk to a law enforcement officer on another side of a school? We have some very, very large schools, very strong structures, and given my experience as mayor, I knew that in some of our hotels, we had that problem. We did an inspection of all of our schools, and we have put repeaters, transmitters, whatever you call them, in all of our schools, to make sure that when law enforcement comes, they don't inadvertently shoot each other while they're trying to figure out what room the shooter might be in. So, I can't point to something we've done wrong yet, we've done active shooter drills, where we've worked on reunification, as well as making sure we have that communication line wide open, and everybody knows their role.
Thank you. Mr. Barton, obviously, you come at this from a, from a different perspective, having not been on the board, but, but tell me, what is the biggest thing that you see going forward as, as something that you would do as chair to address this?
Well, one of the issues that I know that they are currently addressing, but I do not know how they've chosen it, is the fact that, okay, I was at the meeting, and I, our current officer that pretty much oversees this program for keeping our schools safe, he mentioned that on campus, our actual safety leader, or there is a better term, I'm sure you'll be able to say what that term was, Ms. Teresa, is the actual person is the principal. What I, when I heard that, I, I had an aha moment, how could we've implemented something for protecting the kids whereby our onsite safety officer, if you will, is the busiest person possible on the entire campus? It made, it did not make sense to me, but that was how I understood that conversation, and then the solutions for this were actually spoken, that we would do it offline, which I do understand, because you do not want people who might have bad intent to understand exactly all of the way you're going to protect the kids. But that, and there are a few more, but I'm going to keep it short, those things I've dug into pretty strongly, and I really do not believe that that was the appropriate approach.
So, to be clear, there's no specifics at this point that you're willing to talk about, in, in terms of general things that you would do to, to improve school safety?
Okay, I'll, I'll give you one, that's a real big hot potato.
Yes, just one would be great, thank you.
Just one, I'll give it to you, I really and truly have no problem with a proper implementation of the Guardian program. I do not believe, after I have studied on it myself, that it is the way that it's been presented to the public, aside from, like, I'm talking about the governor and Congress and, and those who have looked and tried to protect our kids. For me, I have a, I have a multi, my part, my mindset on this is simple, we have what we're dealing with right now in society, where we have active murderers trying to get onto campus, who finish their dirty work inside of a five-minute timeframe. And then we have, this is just based off of the reports, you have, starting at the five-minute timeframe is normally when your officers are arriving to get to protect, which means the death and the mayhem and injury has occurred during the first five minutes. So, for me, I see us having to have a multi-pronged attack on this. We have to have in place a system for protecting our kids in the environment that we find ourselves in now, where we have a quick response that will eliminate and definitely mitigate harm to our students in that five-minute block. And then, for, as we go forward, we need to have the funding, and we need to implement safeguards, of course, one-way entry and those types of things, we have to have those for a longer term. So, that's my concept, is upfront, we must have rational things. Now, if we have the resources, put three officers on every campus, okay, that's great, I can work with that. But to this point, I was believing, and I'm sure Ms. Teresa will answer this here, that when you look, and the one of the reasons for having the principals in the roles that they were in was saving funding.
Thank you.
If I can, I, I'm sorry, can I please respond to that? Because you have people that are viewing this, and I don't want them thinking that what they just heard was true. Our parents and our students need to become, come to school feeling comfortable. We have a law enforcement, armed law enforcement officer on every campus. Mr. Maxwell, you'll remember that I started this in elementary schools, when, one of the first things I did when I was mayor after Sandy Hook. We have two in every high school. There is no business, there's no school that's going to wait around for an officer to get there. I don't support guardians. We talk a lot in Tallahassee about parents' rights, I'm a big supporter and believer that parents' rights should be always considered. Our parents have overwhelmingly spoken and said, "We don't want guardians in our schools that have somewhere around 36 hours worth of training with a gun. We want people who have a lifetime of training with when and how you use a deadly weapon." And that's why we have stuck, and our students have spoken loud and clear, our community has spoken loud and clear. They want trained law enforcement officers who have committed their life to knowing when and how to use a deadly weapon.
And just one more point, who is over the officers, or who, I mean, because this was a very interesting point that you made, because I was at the meeting, who runs that campus's safety?
Not the principal. This, the SRO does not answer to the principal. You're confusing it with another team that deals with threat response, and who convenes a meeting. But no, you have that wrong, I'm sorry, Mr. Barton, but you have that wrong, I'm not sure what you heard.
I have one quick question, to move on from this, not to make this a debate.
If I was wrong on how I understood during that meeting, then I will admit to that error, but that was the understanding that I walked away from that meeting with.
My name is Jennifer Marcial, and I'm the editor of El Centinello, which is a Spanish publication for the Orlando Sentinel. I cover many underserved communities, especially Hispanics, Latinos, many of whom are also LGBTQ+ and we've been hearing a lot about protecting parents' rights of what their kids are being taught in schools and whatnot, but many have reached out to us concerned with kids whose parents are not okay with them being LGBTQ, or parents who are concerned with their kids not being culturally accepted in schools. Now, with so many laws, the anti-woke, and, and many things about the culturally responsive teaching and social emotional learning, I wanted to know, what will be each of you's take on making schools, Orange County schools, safe places for everybody regardless of, like, race, where they come from, especially my interest for Latino kids and Hispanic kids who are coming here, most of them sometimes not even knowing English. If we can start with Mr. Barton, and then we can go with Mrs. Jacobs, as to how would you continue this in Orange County?
Okay. I would not continue it by using SEL. I believe that SEL has some very, I'm saying this here for a reason. Social emotional learning, I do not believe that that is the proper vehicle, for one reason, which was not mentioned earlier, because I was waiting to say this here, there are lenses that all of social emotional learning uses. One of them is called unconscious bias. When I hear this, I agree, we must have a system that protects all our children, regardless of race, or gender, or religious affiliation. We, or, we should have it be a safe haven for all our kids. What I have understood from the approach that our system is using right now, is that the way to make it a safe haven is to undermine, and this is my word being used from based off of Y-CRT language, SEL is being stricken, what we have is a system that's undermining belief systems, and I'm not talking about race, I'm talking about belief systems of families, we believe our family should be, be religious, or we should believe our family has these beliefs. Those things are not the right of the school system to undermine, though we must have a peaceful place. When you say this, I do believe if we can garner an arena of respect, mutual respect, kindness in our schools, and opportunity where our kids are actually- and opportunity where our kids are actually getting educated and actually are performing at grade level and actually do have a hope. I believe when, as we correct things that cause people to divide and get angry with each other, we will start to solve a lot of these issues. But again, I do not believe that SEL is the right approach, because it, it garners division and it undermines parental authority.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Acasio, let me answer your question first, and then I'd like to respond, because there's just more misinformation on SEL. Uh, you wouldn't know this, but one of the first things I did as a chair was I brought a proclamation. I expected it to be controversial. It was a proclamation celebrating, um, Pride Month as well as reflecting on Pulse. And I was surprised and, um, really excited to find that our entire board was enthusiastic. We have pride displayed on, um, all of our mantles, um, out front of our schools, on middle schools and high schools. We don't in elementary schools. So we are very concerned about our students feeling like they're welcome, regardless of how they feel about each other. We also, um, one of my other requests was that we get a GSA in every middle and high school. GSA, as you know, is, um, a gay straight alliance club. We didn't have them in all of our middle schools. We do today because of my push to make sure that we found a sponsor and we found a way to make sure that every school, there was a safe club and a safe place for our students. The problem, as you know, that we have today is we have a law now that says that if a child comes to his teacher, I'm going to hypothetical, it's a gay child, comes to a gay teacher, I need somebody to talk to. I can't talk to my parents. They won't be able to handle this. But I need to be able to talk to somebody about how I'm feeling. Can I trust you? And it used to be we'd have a sticker on the door that would let you know, this person you can trust. He's not going to betray you. He's not going to out you. Unfortunately, we have a law in place now that says that if the parent asks for any change in his mental well-being or his care or anything, you have to share that. We're not sure exactly what that means. And we're trying desperately to figure out what that means. Because if it means that that parent, that, that, that teacher has to potentially out that child, there is one other provision in the law that says that if you believe that that child, by sharing some information, will be subject to neglect or abuse, you don't have to share it. So there is a provision in the statute that allows a teacher or counselor, and our counselors are extremely concerned as well. Counselors are people that children should be able to go to and have safe conversations. I, with my own kids, made my neighbor the people they could go to if they need to have a conversation that for whatever reason they didn't want to have with me. Children need to have somebody else besides just parents they can talk to. So very worried about this law. As far as SEL, I said it before, it's exactly, it doesn't teach, uh, uh, implicit bias, that's not SEL. It teaches the same life skills we're required to teach. In the statute, the statute says thou shalt teach this material. If we can, if we're required to teach it, how are we supposed to teach it if it's not in any of our instructional material? That doesn't make sense. The problem is there is a disconnect between what the chancellor asked for and what the law says, and we have to follow the law. Mr. Benton, Barton filed an, uh, complaint with the Office of Inspector General over this issue. And the inspector general has disregarded his complaint.
May I respond to?
Um, actually, we, we do need to move on, because we're on, we are, we are actually.
There wasn't a truth, she just said exactly the way it happened. The way she said it happened was not exactly what happened.
Sir, I, I, I understand that, and, and, but we have gone over this issue pretty extensively. I did want to get to one more question, and it's one that I think that both of you will want to address. Um, but we are, we are, we actually have gone past our time. And so one of the things that we have found that just about every candidate loves to talk about is the, um, the offerings that are pummeled in for students who may not see college as their end game. Um, career, technical education, dual enrollment for those students who do want to go to college and are pretty eager to get started. Um, Orange County has an enormous amount of opportunity now, but what opportunities do you see for expansion in the future? Where, where would you like Orange County to take career and technical education from here? And we'll start with, um, Chair Jacobs.
Thank you. We do have tremendous programs. I think they're underutilized. Uh, we don't even need to expand the programs as much as we need to expand the reach. And one of the ways that we're looking at doing that, we've, we've created a program called Reimagining CTE. The goal is from eighth grade to twelfth grade, from kindergarten to twelfth grade, we want to make kids more and more aware of what career opportunities there are. So many kids, the only thing they know of is what they see and it's a teacher, um, and a mailman and the few people they interact with. We want them to know the whole array of careers there are right here locally. And then from eighth grade to twelfth grade, we go into this more immersive process where students, if they want to, can actually intern in the job field that they might be interested in. And we expand on that from ninth grade to twelfth grade and make that more intensive. This doesn't mean the kids aren't going to college. They may still want to go to college. They may be looking at a field that, you know what, it'd be nice to know if I really want to do this, because if I'm going to put in four years of college and then come out and do a job I don't like. So we're really, and we're working with our industry partners. They are so excited about this. Um, we have just started this this year, but our industry partners are thrilled because jobs are, you know, abundant and employees are not. So we really got to connect our kids. Plus, we need to get our, our kids that are from disadvantaged communities. We need to get them fired up about the idea that there is a job waiting for them where they can make more than a livable wage, that they can make a wage that they can enjoy life the way they want to enjoy life growing up.
So I don't just answer for, um, for Mr. Risa. Could you give me the question one more time?
Um, I, I basically am asking how Orange County should consider in the future expanding or re-remodeling, if, if at all, its career and technical education opportunities?
Okay. When I talk to this, this is, I do have a little policy that I have from SEL personally. Your principles should carry. Your principles should, the principles that are, that you base your philosophy on how you run your governance or where you, where you put your policies at, they must work. And they, if they're good enough, they can work in small arenas, just like they work in big ones. The problem is that most of the time when we have big arenas, you have people who do not have principles that are working in small ones, and they'll apply them to a big arena without them being proven. So we kind of figure out as we go for the most part. When you look at this area of what you would call the trades, I actually have implemented that in my family. My family, actually, everyone in my, my household, all of us, across the board, have different trade levels. That includes myself. I'm a GC on top of being an engineer and having my masters in thermodynamics. I have done this. My kids have done it. My wife have done it. We are not, we're not guessing. I also have been a part of some of this type of programs from when I was a kid. I really believe in magnet style programs. I believe in actually having that implemented into your school systems, so that, into our school system, so that we literally could not just have a great place where the kids can come and they can find different avenues of interest. But I'm looking at re-engaging our kids, because our kids are not engaged. Our kids don't, we don't have the buy-in. When you're looking at the level of grade level accomplishment that we're having based off of what we're graduating, we do not have the buy-in from our kids. And what I'm looking at right now is simple. As early in age as possible, we will, should start a magnet type of approach for our kids, where they, just like those who have more wealth, can make these choices with their kids. The young kids can make it, and as they get older, they can refine and go in directions. I also believe that will bring in more funding, as Mr. Risa was talking about, from the corporate interest, because I also was reviewing that. That is, that to me will be wonderful for us to bring in, or to bring up these young ones, bring in experts from our local area. I'm also a businessman on top of being a pastor. You know, bring them in and help us to solve what obviously we haven't solved for ourselves in our own system.
Yeah. Well, and so we, as I said, we have come to the, to the end of our time and, and I do appreciate both of you taking the time to meet with us very much. What I'd like you to do is, if you can.
Could I, could I do one thing, though? Because I never got to have my question.
The closing statements. I'm sorry. We, we are, we are well past our time. Um, and, um, and, and we want to be, we want our readers to be able to watch the videos, trying to keep them to a manageable length. Um, the, um, just, just basically give us your pitch for why you should be either remain as the school board chair or become the school board chair. And, and we'll start with Mr. Barton.
Okay.
Thank you.
Why should I be the school board chair? At this time, we have a system that has a lot of problems. We have teachers that are not being paid enough in their opinion, based off of the unions representing them and their responses in many meetings. They are not getting paid enough to even live nearby the schools where they teach. We have a one-meal continuance, military continuance that is being requested, which personally I can understand if we need something, we do, but it really rubbed me wrong. Public, it really rubbed me wrong, parents, when I'm looking at the money that we're trying to get a continuance on, and we're saying that this is going to help to secure either the raises or the pay of teachers as the first line item. After that are the other ones. I stand by my principle. If it don't work in your house, it does not work in the bigger pictures. In my house, my foundation bills must be paid before my peripheral bills are paid. Teachers are fundamental and foundational to this school system. They should not be put, their pay should not be aligned to non-recurring funds that you must beg for every four years. Concerning me as a person, we have implemented for our family, we have done, I have worked throughout our communities and over Tampa Bay and coming here to help young people, to help families. Yes, from a ministerial point of view, but also from backing organizations. All I can tell you is this, if you choose me, I will not change on you when I get in office. I never have, and I never will. I will protect all of our students. I will not put preference to any of our students, but I will not put any, any of our students at the back of the bus, which is if we implement something like SEL, the way it is being asked, it will put people at the back of the bus. And parents, you're at the rear end. Thank you.
All right. Chair Jacobs, you, you have a floor?
Thank you. And I didn't get a chance at first, so thank you for this opportunity and this forum. While the last several years have been some of the most difficult years our, our world has seen in recent history, and it has certainly been the case for schools across the, not just across the state and nation, but across the world. I have to say that when I look at our students, our teachers, our staff and our parents, they've done an amazing job. I believe they've also benefited from steady and cohesive leadership from the board, from the superintendent and from our cabinet. We're, our graduation rate is at ninety-eight point four percent for our traditional high schools. We were an A-rated school in two thousand nineteen. We are a B-rated school right now with less than one point between an A and a B, and we still have about a dozen schools that haven't reported. We have done remarkable compared to schools across the nation. That's particularly impressive when you consider that when we started this term less than four years ago, five out of eight board members were brand new on the board. I believe that my sixteen years in office, both my time spent as a commissioner, understanding the frustrations that come from not being allowed to bring ideas forward, to my experience as mayor, have been invaluable to me in learning when to listen and how to lead our board during meetings. I also know that our one-mill tax and our half penny sales tax are essential, and they have been essential to us in meeting our technology needs during this pandemic and our air quality challenges during this pandemic. With two board members stepping down and with a new superintendent, extremely, extremely qualified superintendent, I would ask that you consider the value of maintaining as much continuity as is possible during these turbulent times. I've been in office here in Orange County for over twenty years. You know me, you know when I say something, I mean it, and I'm going to stand by it. I've done the best that I can. I haven't always gotten things right, but I've told you the truth. And I'm telling you the truth now. If I'm given the chance to serve for four more years, I will do my absolute best for every child in our schools. Thank you.